Good evening and welcome to the Thursday, April 24, 2025, meeting of the Lakeville Planning Board. It is 7:00 PM and we are meeting this evening at the Lakeville Police Station at 323 Bedford Street. We have late cam recording. Is anyone else recording? Hearing none. We do have a quorum this evening with myself, Mr. Lodge and Mr. Cabral. We are waiting on the other two members to trickle in, but we are getting started with agenda item number one, which is an A&R Plan, 280 Bedford Street, Zenith Land Surveyors LLC, possible vote. Good evening.
How you doing? My name is Bob Forbes from Zenith Consulting Engineers and I'm representing the survey department, Zenith Land Surveyors on this one tonight. So this is a relatively, hopefully this is a relatively simple for me, for you guys. What this is, is you know, everybody in town's familiar with this, but it's the funeral home right down the street. And there are two currently residential home and the funeral home, and they're on one lot. I'm not exactly sure why that is, but maybe it was supposed to be subdivided way back and it never happened. So this is simply an A&R plan to divide that into two lots. So there's now one building on each lot. And I don't know if they're planning on selling that building or maybe refine this. I have no idea why, but there's no proposed work on either of the lots. It's just to get each building on its own lot. Each lot has the required frontage and area. And you can see they put their zoning circles on. And the last time I was in front of you, the plan did not have the septic system, so they do, this one does have that. So I don't know if I can answer any questions.
So is that the only change? Because I thought I saw it on the first plan we got, and then we got another.
Well, what, okay, yeah, you guys did see a revised plan. When I was told that I was going to be representing this, I took a look at the plans. And all that, what it did is the, there was typos for both lots. The area is represented here and here on the lot, but also in that note down in the corner, in those, they didn't match. And I believe there was a typo on each one. They were similar by one digit on each one. So we got that corrected. And there was also, because this plan needs to be recorded, there was some issues with the size of the font that didn't meet registry standards. So as far as I know.
So it's just minor.
It's just minor, minor things, nothing of substance. Just to correct it, make it right for you guys and make it registry standards. And I had them change, it said S slash system, but I wanted them to change it to septic system.
Okay.
Just because when I first looked at it, I'm like, you know, a layman isn't going to even know what that is. So let's just, we can write out the word septic.
Now, did you find the new application helpful because of all the checkboxes?
I did not do it, but I can ask the survey department, the administrative staff over there took care of all of that, so I can, I can.
Yeah, I mean, I'm curious to know what the feedback is. I, myself, I'm hoping that it's helpful because like you said, you caught the septic before coming, so you didn't have to come back.
Yeah.
So that's good. Does any planning board members have comments, questions?
No.
Nope.
Yeah, so I think this, for me, I think it really helps make sure that everything's there when we get it. So would someone like to make a motion to approve this A&R?
I'll make a motion to approve the A&R at 280 Bedford Street.
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, agenda item number two, public hearing, special permit, 160 Bedford Street, continued to this evening. Request for a special permit under section 270-7.412 to allow a commercial parking facility, possible vote. We do have a request from the applicant for a continuation. Kathy also gave us a couple of dates because they're currently going through conservation. And conservation's next meeting date is May 13th, and then the following one is May 27th. And KP Law, who had taken a look at this and was going to be here remotely with us, had actually given a June date.
Yeah, I didn't know if that was just a date he randomly threw out or unsure on that one.
Okay, all right, so I wasn't sure where that June came from either. But if, so if conservation is a meeting until the May 13th, our meeting is the 8th, so we would make more sense to have it.
22nd.
May 22nd.
Mm-hmm. But when's their next conservation? Do they think they're not going to get in for the next conservation?
I mean, they may not.
Is that the reason why?
It sounds like they have a lot to do, especially reading through their peer review. I guess we could push it out even further.
Yeah, you might want to go.
Because they've requested the continuation and we can sign that date and just let them know. And if there is a problem, we can always.
So yeah, what's their second, so it would be the 27th, right? I think that's probably why, because it gives them a month.
Yep, so then it would be looking at June 12th. So.
I don't mind putting on the 22nd, but then we'll have to continue it again. So I don't know if that.
Yeah, I mean, if there's any feedback, we still have another meeting that we can put it on. If Kathy, you know, got some sort of a response and they want to move it up, then we can consider it, I guess.
Well, they didn't give a date, so it seems like they left it with you.
Right.
They would have to abide by that.
We can do the June if you want, just keep it safe.
So I mean, that's just a little over a month anyways.
Yep.
So would someone like to make a motion to continue this?
I'll make a motion to continue the 19 Main Street until June 12th, 2025.
Was it 160?
160 Bedford Street, sorry. I was reading the next one. So I make a motion to continue 160 Bedford Street to June 12th.
Checking.
We have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. That has been continued to June 12th. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing, site plan review, 19 Main Street, continued to this evening upon the application for a site plan review submitted by C.D. Dankwitz Realty, Inc. for the construction of a proposed mixed-use retail and business development comprised of two buildings and associated site improvements. This applicant has also requested to continue and they did give a date of May 8th. So would someone like to make that motion?
I'll make a motion to continue 19 Main Street to May 8th, 2025.
Motion.
Second.
In a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. That has been continued. Agenda item number four, we have a public hearing for definitive subdivision at 92 Howland Road upon the application of L&amp;B Realty Trust for approval of a definitive subdivision plan submitted by Zenith Consulting Engineers for a two-lot subdivision, assessor map 012, lot 2, lot 26. And I do have.
Do we have to open it?
Yes.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to open it.
Let me read the.
Just read the whole thing, right?
Here it is. All right, notice of public hearing. The Lakeville Planning Board will conduct a public hearing pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter 41, Section 81T, on Thursday, April 24th, 2025, at 7:00 PM at the Lakeville Police Station, 323 Bedford Street to consider the application of L&amp;B Realty Trust for approval of a definitive plan submitted by Zenith Consulting Engineers, LLC for a two-lot subdivision located at 92 Howland Road, assessor map 12, lot 2, lot 26. The application and assorted documents can be viewed in the planning department by appointment on or on the planning board webpage.
Make a motion to open the public hearing for 92 Howland Road.
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Hearing is open. Welcome.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair and Board Members. For your record, my name is Robert Mather. I represent the applicant, William Logan, trustee of L&amp;B Realty Trust. With me tonight is Bob Forbes, Zenith Consulting Engineer. Excuse me, this is our first meeting for a two-lot subdivision to be known as Mystic Estates, located off Highland Road. It's immediately adjacent, just westerly of Aponequid Regional High School. The property is 6.43 acres, containing 280,184 square feet of upland area. This will be a two-lot subdivision. Lot 1 has 4.035 acres and 175 feet of frontage. Lot 2 has 1.607 acres and 282.56 feet of frontage. Because it's only a two-lot subdivision and located in a rural setting, we'll be asking for some significant waivers, but I'm going to let Bob address those issues and address the waivers. With one exception, the list of waivers that was submitted includes a request in item number 11 to allow overhead utilities. We'd like to withdraw that request, that waiver request, for a couple of reasons. Number one, this particular developer always uses underground utilities. And it's also my understanding that the planning board always requires underground utilities. So we're going to withdraw that particular request. Before I turn it over to Bob, I do want to just address the few issues that are unique to two-lot subdivisions. And they deal with the road waivers that go along with it. And they're unique both to the town and the developer. And the reason they're unique and they have to do with the fact that the road will never become public. And what's unique about is, is that what the board does and what the developer does, it's very important that it's made very clear that they will never become public. So that down the line, 10, 15 years from now, owners of the property don't come back to the town, don't come back to the developer and say, why isn't my road being repaired and taken care of? And it's dealt with in a couple of ways to start with. The board, and as you've done in the past, you're going to put a condition when you give your approval in your certificate of approval, that it remains private in perpetuity. The certificate of approval does get recorded, but as you may know, and I do a lot of conveyancing work, nobody reads the certificate of approval. A buyer is not going to see that. The second way that there is somewhat of a guarantee that it remains, that not only that it remains private, is that the public is aware of that, is that you will be requiring them to create a homeowners association. Homeowners Association will provide that the roadway has to remain private. And also has a few other things that are in it. We'll be providing, one of the things in your certificate of approval, you'll require that there be a homeowners association, that it be reviewed by your town council. And a few things that are in it and that will include in a homeowners association, assuming we obtain your approval. We always include in those that the lot owners are automatically the trustees of the homeowners association. In other words, you never have to hunt around to see who the trustees are. The owners are the trustees. There's also a provision that says that any unpaid assessments, it's only two people, but any unpaid assessments are automatically liens on the property. And probably most important, there are two provisions regarding the town. There's a provision that says that the town has the right, but not the obligation, to make repairs to the roadway if they choose. And if they do so, they can also put a lien on the property. And in addition to that, because homeowners associations normally can be terminated by the homeowners. But in this type of a homeowners association, there is a provision that states that this homeowners association cannot be terminated without consent of the planning board. In addition to that, whenever I do this type of a two-lot subdivision, I go one step further and I put it in the actual deed of conveyance. Not only just referring to the fact that it is subject to the terms and conditions of the homeowners association, but I put an additional provision in that states that the buyer is aware that this is a private road and will remain private in perpetuity. That's put in to protect the developer, so that no one can come back to the particular developer. So those are issues that you don't face with a regular subdivision, but that's how we address it with a two-lot subdivision. So at this point, unless you have any questions for me, I'd like to turn it over to Bob, who can go through the proposed subdivision and especially the waivers.
Okay. Bob? Thank you again, Bob Forbes from Zenith Consulting Engineers. So this is, the proposal for this, as Bob mentioned, is for a two-lot waived subdivision. We, this, this is the proposed roadway. And these are the two lots here. This is the entire parcel and the two lots are subdivided here and there. The proposed roadway is shaded in gray here. And what we're proposing is 24, this is very similar to what we've done on other waived sub, two-lot waived subdivisions in town. And what we've done is, the roadway is about 590 feet long. And we provided 20-foot paved width of road, and that's to meet the fire code, which is anything over 150 feet long, you need to not only provide the 20-foot width, but also a turnaround at the end. And that's what we've done here. You can see we have a T-turnaround proposed at the end. Again, similar to.
I'm sorry, everybody.
No problem. Similar to other two-lot subdivisions we've done in town. And the other fire code condition of a road, a road like this for access for the fire vehicles, that it be less than 5% maximum grade. And we have a max grade of 3.57% here. Now, I keep talking about the fire code, but the fire chief did submit a letter on this, and I believe you have it. And I'm not sure what he's, what he's saying in it. It's basically just telling us to meet the fire code, which is what we've done. And we will be meeting with him, just so we can all get on the same page. And we'll make sure that that is all taken care of. We have the access and the turnaround that the fire department is looking for here. But again, like I said, the fire department has approved others in town to have similar geometry to this one. As far as utilities go, we're proposing private wells for water, onsite septic systems, obviously. As Bob mentioned, underground electric, so that waiver is being withdrawn. Waiver request is being withdrawn. And the drainage on this, oh, one of the things that you may recall is I represented the A&R Plan that created this lot. And one of the things was, there was a condition put on that to be able to, I believe, I'm not exactly sure how it was worded, but basically to meet stormwater management standards when we, whatever we did here. So that's what we've done. We've, we've done the design. As far as we are concerned, we've met stormwater management standards. We understand that you'll likely be sending this out for review. And of course, we have no problem with that. And we'll work with that reviewer to make sure that everything is done consistent with what your condition for the, for the Form A and with the stormwater management standards. So what it consists of is we have, we're draining the road into roadside swale, which is one of the things that's mentioned in the stormwater management standards as they call it, LID measure, which is low-impact development measure. And where, so there's a high, there's a high point in the road around here where bringing the road into the swale on the side of the road and down into an infiltration basin here. The rest of the road and the lots and roof area drains down into an existing depression in the back. That is what we've used on other projects. And they, they work out great because you don't have to cut down the trees. You don't have to cut down a half an acre or an acre of trees to build a depression. We've already got one there. And in this particular case, it's approximately 20 to 21 feet deep. And in the 100-year storm, we get a depth of three feet in the basin. And that gives us 17 feet of freeboard above where the 100-foot storm elevation would be. So, and the requirement for stormwater management is one foot. So it's this big hole in the ground. And we're hoping we're going to be able to work with the reviewer to allow that. It's, it's a little tricky because stormwater management standards are going to kind of dictate that we cut down an acre's worth of trees to do this. So we've done this many times, it works great, and it's really low impact. So hopefully, we're going to be able to work with them to get that approved. But that's what, that's what our intention is anyway. So again, we had one, one basin to be constructed and one existing depression. And that's, it's, that's pretty much it. I don't know if there's, there's not really many more details. It's simple as far as the design and layout goes. And if you'd like, I can, I can go through the waiver request that very similar to what we've requested in the past on subdivisions like this.
Yeah.
But I'd be happy to.
Yeah, let's go through them, just because some of them, we do typically waive. And then, but once again, you know, taking note 11, there's still 14.
Yeah, yeah.
That's a high number.
Oh, no, understood.
But we are looking to redo the rules and regs, so hopefully eventually we'll get to a nice spot for all you private road subdivisions.
Don't need as many waivers.
I have to put on my glasses for this one, so. So the first, number one is to allow a centerline radius of less than 150 feet. And we have 60-foot proposed, and I can show you what that is. I mean, it's a very straight proposed road, but it's right here. And what the, the fire chief actually showed, he gave us a diagram. I don't know if it was on page two or what he said, but the turning radius for their vehicles is much smaller than 60 feet. In other words, this will work fine for the fire chief to be able to navigate that. We're asking to allow a curb radius of less than 30 feet at an intersection. And we're proposing 10, that's this, this radius here. These two radii, I should say. And 30 is a good, for, for, for a large subdivision road or like an industrial subdivision, 30 feet works well. What Mass Highway would require for an entry to a stop and shop or something would be 30 feet radii. And typically, that has been waived in the past and we feel that's more than adequate. And again, the fire chief will be able to get his vehicles in there. Again, we'll go over that with him and show him. We'll put, we'll give him those turning radii diagrams so he can see that. Number three is to allow an intersection less than 600 feet from Sears Island Drive. And this is about 100 feet. That's, that roadway is across the road and I believe it's approximately right here. That's, I'm not sure if the 600 feet is intended for roads on the same side of the roadway. I'm not exactly sure what that is, but that we're asking for that waiver just because of the location, the amount of traffic out of this roadway, essentially a sheer driveway for two lots, is going to be so minimal that it shouldn't make any difference. Number four is to allow a right-of-way width of less than 50 feet. We're proposing 40. Everything we, we need to do here fits easily within the 40-foot right-of-way. And way back when, we were often asked to make these private roadways 40 feet by, by previous planning boards in Lakeville, just so that it would make it even more difficult to extend that roadway in the future in any way. And they felt if we kept it at 40 feet, we wouldn't be able to do that. You know, you'd need the 50-foot to be able to extend it further. So that's what we, typically what we've, again, what we've always done. To waive, number five, to waive the requirement of a dead-end street with a turnaround having an outside roadway diameter of at least 120 feet. Again, that's the big cul-de-sac that everybody's used to. Again, on the two-lot, we've provided the T-turnaround. It's, it works out well and limits the amount of pavement that we have to put on the site. Number six is to allow a minor road with 24-foot paved width. We're proposing 20 in this case. Again, that's to meet the minimum fire code requirements. Number seven, to waive the requirements of curbs and berms. And it says the road is proposed to pitch to a grass swale. Again, if we, for, they call it country drainage for that LID requirement to swale on the side of a road. If you have a berm there, the water can't get off the road and into that berm. So in that particular LID design, BMP that they, that they asked, one of the things that they suggest in stormwater management, you can't have berms in that case for that to work. Number eight, to waive the requirement for sidewalks, self-explanatory. Number nine, to allow roadway embankment slopes greater than 3 to 1. We're proposing a 2 to 1. And again, that's to limit the amount of trees that need to be cut. That 2 to 1 slope would obviously be stabilized. Number 10 is to waive the requirements of water facilities, weight water supply and gas main. Again, as I mentioned earlier, we're proposing private wells on, on each lot. And it's not going to, they're not going to run gas into the site. I'm not even sure if it's available here, maybe, but they're proposing using propane for that.
I don't think so.
Not up there.
So that's a, that's a subdivision requirement, so you guys might see that. Waiver request a lot of gases unavailable, you should request a waiver. Again, number 11, as Bob mentioned, we're withdrawing. Number 12, to waive the requirement of an oil separator prior to stormwater outflow. And the reason we're asking for that is it's not, that's not something that's required in stormwater management standards. So we're, we're dealing with that in other ways with four-bays and infiltration basins and the grass swale and whatever. So we're asking for, for that. In order to have an oil-water separator, we'd have to collect it, put it in catch bases, and we couldn't have that country drainage system that we're proposing. Number 13, to allow a drainage pipe material other than RCP, which is reinforced concrete pipe. We're proposing HDPE, which is the corrugated plastic pipe. And we do that in pretty much every, that might be another thing you might want to take a look at. In every regard, HDPE pipe is stronger structurally. It has better hydraulic capabilities. It's easier to install. It's not cheaper. The product, the material itself is a little bit more expensive, but it's less expensive to install. So the developers aren't trying to get around anything by asking for HDPE pipe. It's just a better product. It lasts longer, the life, the lifespan of the product is much longer.
And the pipe's not perforated, right?
No, 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 no. It's a solid, it's corrugated on the outside. What it does is it creates, creates all these consecutive arches, which gives it incredible strength.
Right.
A concrete, Class C, Class 3 concrete pipe needs at least 24 inches, depending on the bedding material of cover over it, whereas HDPE pipe only requires 12. It's just a better product, so that's why we're. It's just a better product. So that's why we're requesting that. Number fourteen, to waive the requirement of streetlights, self-explanatory. And fifteen, to waive the requirement of trees. And we're gonna try to keep as many trees as we can. Anything outside of the, what we are required to cut to build what ends up being proposed.
At this point, any planning board members have any questions, comments, concerns?
Can we go back to the berm again for the street?
Yeah.
So it's not gonna be a, is it gonna be, it's not gonna be a Cape Cod berm or anything to that?
No, so what we have is we have a road that's pitched two percent from one side to the other. And on the low end, we have that country drainage I was talking about, the swale.
Right.
That's put in there. So a vegetated swale. If we have the berm there, what it's gonna do is it's gonna hit that berm and travel down the paved surface in the gutter line. Like on a typical road.
Yep.
So we can, you can't have that berm and get the water into that country drainage system that we're proposing.
Okay.
What about kind of reinforcing the edge of the pavement? Because without a berm, your pavement edge.
Well, typically what we, that's the shoulder that's required on the, that we have shown on the detail.
Okay, I hadn't looked through the details.
Check that out and I will, and I will review that as well and make sure. There should be a, there should be a two foot minimum shoulder there. And if there isn't, I will make sure there is. In other words, you're right. You don't want it to be pavement and come down at a three to one slope on the edge of pavement. You want that shoulder there.
Right, because you know, otherwise the pavement will break off and you'll have a mess very quickly.
Agreed. No, it's a good point. And again, I'll check that and make sure that that's the case on the detail.
I do see it.
Yeah.
Is it on it? Yeah, good. The guy who designed it is over there. Good job, Will.
Now, I know you've been calling this a two lot subdivision because you're creating two lots.
Yep.
But the existing home, it looks like it's also gonna.
That's not getting touched. We showed that only because when we created this lot, there was a drainage easement here. So we're showing that just to show you that the drainage easement. So nothing's changing on that lot. We're not.
But it's coming out onto the road.
Oh, yeah, that was, and I believe we may have even talked about that when I represented the form in this. You guys, I think somebody even asked what the intentions were for this lot. And I didn't know at the time and I said, I think it's probably a subdivision. And there we go. So that was, that was a correct statement. And what we're doing is that, that the couple who bought this house had an agreement with the developer, bought it from Mr. Lowman, who's developing this project. And the idea was to bring that, allow this, the people who own this house to tie their driveway into that subdivision roadway.
So there is a driveway right now that runs across the easement?
It does. It comes out, the driveway now comes down here and comes out right at the location of the roadway. So if you're looking to find out where this road is gonna go, look for that existing driveway.
So this house won't be part of the homeowners association?
Well, Bob. Right, no, they, they have an easement over a very small portion of the roadway. So we didn't think it would be fair to make them share a third of the cost when they use maybe a sixth or fifth of the roadway. They don't have the right to use the entire roadway. They only will have the right to use the small portion. But they already have that. When the property was deeded to them, they were granted the right to use only that edge portion.
But if the, if the homeowners association decides not to pay their plow guy, how do, how these people get out of their driveway onto a new road?
Well.
That's what attorneys.
It's, I mean, it's, it's the same thing you could say to homeowner lot number one if number two doesn't pay their their portion. It's one of the problems of a two lot subdivision. I'm sorry, two lot. It's one of the problems of a private road that happens. And it's why when, if I represent someone that is buying a house on a private road, we tell them that. What happens if your neighbor doesn't make their payment? Well, you're gonna have to make the payment or you're gonna have to pay it. You have a lien. You can make that payment. You can put a lien on the property and get your money back, but it's a problem of owning a property on a private road.
Wouldn't it be appropriate for them, their owner, to go to the homeowners association meeting approach the subject and come to some agreement with them as to what will happen about the plowing and that kind of stuff?
Maintaining it?
Yeah. Well.
That's not your problem. That's their problem.
I mean, the homeowners association has the obligation to take care of their roadway for the two lots that are out there. They, the owner of the house is it has the right to use it. They don't have to pay a portion of that. But in the same manner as the other two lots, if somebody, if it doesn't get plowed, it doesn't get plowed. In the same manner as any, I mean, Lakeville has got tons of private roads and if they don't get plowed, they don't get plowed.
Right. They would be biting themselves in the foot too because then they can't get to their own homes.
Yeah.
You know?
Right, but so, all right, so what if that ninety-two Holland destroys that end of the road? But they're not, they're not responsible to fix it because it's not their, it's not their private road. They only have an easement through it. So what happens? I'm just saying, you're, you're making a house that's not part of it, like enter onto a private road that they have no, they have no say or no skin in the game on it. So again, to me, it's, it's not a two lot subdivision. It's a three lot subdivision.
Well, of course, remember that the house has a benefit because they could put their driveway out to, they have frontage out to Holland.
They don't because you have a drainage easement right across it. So they have to go across that?
We looked at that and they could put it right in here, no problem and not impact the infiltration basin at all.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm bothered. I am bothered by that though. I mean, you describe a, you know, if one homeowner doesn't pay his assessment for plowing the road, you can put a lien on the other one.
Right.
But the house out front that is just using it as an easement doesn't have that right to put a lien on them.
So yeah, make another one. The road doesn't get plowed or something happens to the road and then an ambulance or a fire truck can't get to the ninety-two Holland, then who's responsible for that?
I'm sorry, say that again?
If an emergency vehicle has to get in for an emergency at ninety-two Holland, but they can't get down the road because something's wrong with it, who's responsible for that? Now, again, they're not part of the subdivision. I know it's beyond kind of maybe the purview of this, but you're creating a portion where a house is going onto a new road that they don't have any responsibility or say in what happens to it and how it's maintained or how it's constructed or anything.
Well, of course, they, they have a right of way and when you have a right of way over the road, you have a right to maintain that road yourself. They can plow it themselves.
But if their plow destroys it, then they're responsible to fix it?
Well, sure.
Yes.
Homeowners Association.
Okay.
Yeah.
I live in LeBaron. And I'm on the country, you know, the country club lane. And we have the homeowners association. It is very similar to that. If one of the, it's not quite as exact as this, but if you don't perform within the rules of the regulations, rules and regulations, they start to find you and then they'll put a lien in your house. Now, I would assume that in this kind of, I don't, I, it's way beyond your purview, but why would not that particular house owners meet with the homeowners association and come to some agreement as to what will happen? The homeowners association is gonna lay out all the regulations as to plowing because if they damage my home, my lawn, they have to fix it.
Sure.
And that's part of the deal. That's part of the homeowners association. That's what you signed up for. And that's what the homeowners association put in the contract. So I would think that this particular owner would meet with these folks and come to some formal agreement in writing as to what will happen in as far as if he doesn't maintain the road or he in any way.
So Jack, so, so, so from what Mr. Mather said earlier about, so you actually, you guys might have missed it. You guys came in after or towards the end of Mr. Mather's presentation. But he did mention how we'll get the, we'll have conditions and one of the normal conditions is reviewing HOA and having town council review it. So maybe that's just something that could be, be included in the HOA document that we could potentially, you know, try to mitigate potential issues down the road for these, you know, new homeowners.
Yeah, I'm not, no problem. I'm just thinking about the what ifs that is gonna happen later.
My brain is running. I'm trying to think.
If anyone, does anyone else have any other questions? If not, I'm gonna open up to the.
Yeah, and I think you said you'll have to meet with the fire department with the turning radius. Because I know that we've had, we've had before where we have allowed the narrower road, but we also, they required like gravel runoff on the sides, so that one they have to make that turn. So they're not running into your, into your unbermed swale.
Absolutely. So that, that second, the document that the fire chief submitted to us and to the board gives all of the specifications for their vehicle that they need to access this. What we have, it's pretty cool. We have this program where we can input all of those specifications, which we've already done for Lakeville. We've done many times, so it's pretty cool. We can actually run that vehicle down this road and make sure that the tires stay on the pavement the entire time. In the past, that's what we've brought to the chief and it's worked well on other ones. So we'll do the same. And like I said, we'll make sure that the, that the chief is happy. If he wants to go a little bit wider, we will, you know?
We've done these recently, the Fitte or the Hammerhead, whatever you wanna call it.
We have. And I would like to make sure that he hasn't run into issues, like experienced issues with those specific subdivision. And that's maybe the reason for this. I'm not sure. Also, I know because you're, you have the waiver for the streetlights. That's a normal waiver. We do typically look for the lanterns at the end of the driveway. The only thought is, you know, if it's not quite a lighted area, maybe there could be a lantern close by, you know, if there's a visibility issue with the backing up on the hammerhead.
Yep.
But, um, did you have anything else?
That was one of the street lights. I'm thinking about that curve. Again, if they can make the turnaround, just trying to back out into Holland especially. And then I guess with the turning radius with the truck, will it, you'll do it at Holland as well for that? I know you guys are acting for a smaller.
Yeah, what we typically do is we show the, the emergency vehicle traveling in both directions on Holland, entering the site, being able to turn around in that turnaround and then coming out and being able to exit in both directions. So that's typically how we do it and we'll make sure that that satisfies the chief.
I don't think it, the existing driveway, I think it's wider than what's there now anyway, so for them to get up there. For the existing house that's there now, it's Holland.
Yes, it is.
The road is not gonna make any difference.
Any other questions? Anyone in the audience wanna come up? Please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record and let us know what your concerns are.
My name is Kimberly Khan, the homeowner of eighty-four Holland Road, right next door.
Oh, come on, boy.
I just had, I mean, I've got, obviously got concerns, my own wetlands and such. And this, I look at this project as a bigger project because the fact that it started off as sixteen acres and it was subdivided to three lots in the front of the street. And I had concerns about how many trees were taken out with that. I was led to believe there wouldn't be that many taken out, but they virtually just leveled the whole place on the front. So I'm concerned about what's gonna happen in the back. And I've got a very high elevation hill, right, well, it's kind of hard to describe, but my house is maybe fifty feet from where that pond is that owned by the high school. So my front, my front door is not far away from like the back corner of.
So your property is all the way at the bottom of this map?
Yeah, our home is right in the pin right here. This mark is just maybe fifty feet off the front step. And our septic is right here also. We just had a new septic put in. It was thirty years old. Reliable excavation did that for us two, three years ago.
Thank you for pointing that out.
Yeah, so all this, when they took all this out, you know, we have, we're on the Great Cedar Swamp. Our driveway is eight hundred feet to the house. We're right here. All this wetlands, we have a culvert, a ten inch culvert goes underneath our driveway and it goes over into the pond that's on our property over here. We have a pond. And there's a, and we've had plenty of county out. They've cleared all the brushes, natural brook from the street or some wall. They've been cleaning it for the last two months to keep that flowing. So when this is done, they took all these trees out. I was all worried about all this running in here. I think they did a French drain here, right? They were supposed to.
To be honest, I don't know what they've done there, but one thing I can tell you.
On those first lots in October, they were gonna put a French drain in, you know, just on these lots.
On that first house at minimum.
So those lots haven't come to planning board. They were just.
We were, yeah, we were conservation commission.
We were conservation, yeah. We're just concerned about, you know, something happening and developing on top of this again, the back of the forty.
Nothing is going back here. So one thing I can show you is it's hard, if you're not an engineer, it's hard to look at these.
No.
So this, okay, so you know the contour. So we have, there's a ridge that's like this. So anything on this side would be flowing towards you. Anything on this side is flowing. This is that, that deep depression that I was talking about. So we're gonna be collecting all that and hopefully, like I said, we want to maintain all of these trees in here. We don't want to cut those. So we don't have control.
I got taken out over here quite a bit. And there's also one over here too across this.
Yeah, there is.
Unfortunately, we don't have control over these lots outside developers.
There's Autobahn right in here between this and this, right in here.
Yeah. So the idea, the intention of this project is to not do anything on this entire side of this lot and maintain all of the trees even up to this point. You can see, see these kind of like bubble line. That's the true, that's the supposed tree line. So we don't wanna go beyond this point, which is.
This homeowner, what's gonna happen to this in the future? This has to stay. It can't be buildable. It's not buildable.
Well, I'm not saying it can't be, but.
That's my concern.
They, you know, Xena Consulting told us when they did these, we're not building behind it in October. And all of a sudden, now this is being.
Yeah, there was not much transparency during the beginning.
At the way that the conservation, you know, they said, nothing's being built behind it.
So the good thing is they have a road at, I think you said five hundred and eighty feet and Lakeville has a maximum seven hundred and fifty feet of a, of a road. So I don't know if, could you approximate where seven fifty is? Like just point it, point to it. So I don't think seven fifty.
So say it was six hundred to this point.
Yeah.
Seven fifty would be somewhere around as where the proposed tree.
So we're still in that, we're still in that novel and we're not on that.
Yeah, so I don't, I don't foresee that even if they were to try to extend it, it wouldn't go all the way down to that corner.
I'm just concerned about that huge hill right in front of, at the back corner of the lot, getting totally clear and having like a major rain situation.
We just wanted to, you know, make sure we document, kind of documentation because, you know, this off the lots and then this being done and all this, you know, and all of a sudden then we have this ten inch culvert that's just not handling the, you know, the wetland.
It's a really good concern.
Yeah, yeah.
And all I can tell you is there's no intention to do anything there. There's not, as the chief person said, we cannot extend that road significantly. It would still be on this side of the ridge. And there's not enough land here to create another lot anyway. So it'd have to be somebody else.
Well, that's only two hundred and seventy-six wide there on the bottom.
Yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't work.
Hundred foot buffer from the way.
Nobody is going to add in another lot down near your house.
In, in doing this, are we gonna, is, excuse me, is conservation gonna require an order of conditions?
I'm sorry, he's talking.
It's okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I've got.
Is conservation going to require any sort of order of conditions on?
There's no, there's no wetlands within a hundred feet of anything that we're doing, so.
No, they did, they did mention to us that there is natural heritage endangered species jurisdiction. Has there been a filing?
Let me look into that because I'm, I, I think what triggers that is the actual filing of the notice of intent. Typically, that's when they get notified. And there isn't one here, so we wouldn't be doing one, but I will.
Because we did have one where there was box turtles on any area and they did have to do a turtle sweep. So I think it depends on what it is.
And again, I'll, we'll get back to you.
We got turtles on our property because we have two ponds. So they, they come right to our grass and they, they lay the eggs there. And we have to just watch them in the driveway all the time because they're, they're in the pond.
Well, it depends on, it's not specific as to what the species is. Well, it depends on, it, it's not specific as to what the species is there, but, but depending on what.
They can't tell you, they can't tell you, cause if they do, they're afraid that people are gonna go in and mine those, that, that, yeah, that species from that land.
So that's not buildable there.
But, uh, Madam Chair, I, I took a look at some previous, um, two and three lot subdivisions that you did. And I happened to notice in, uh, a couple of those, you put in a provision that we would agree to here. That says that the cul-de-sac road shall not be extended or connected to any other road in the future.
So we already have that as a standard condition. So.
Then we wouldn't have frontage.
It's a valid concern on our part.
We're not, we're not gonna extend it even in ten feet.
Just not talk over if we could one at a time.
Yeah.
So, uh, uh, we do have that standard condition. Um, also, I was gonna say something else.
I got one other, one other kind of can of worms that's kind of just beginning is ADUs.
Oh, great. Well, let's, let's not go there yet. The other thing I wanted to mention is the reason that he mentioned, uh, in the beginning is because we had seen all these A and Rs coming and planning board had said, you know, we know that if you disturb an acre, you're supposed to come for site plan review. So we did add that condition as he mentioned. So if, if they disturb an acre, cause clearly people have voice concern about the clearing in, in that area, not knowing what's coming. Um, so we did add that condition to the A and R just to make sure that if there is an acre disturbance that they have to come to the.
Yeah, we had some concerns on our property when I got a hold of Plinett County, cause they, they do spray their, you know, a certain area. They can't come up all the way to the driveway cause of the Autobahn.
Oh, the mosquito control.
The mosquito control. But when they were out looking things over, I said, we had a, a pond starting to form right behind our house, forty feet. And there's some fallen trees. It's on the school property. It's right behind us. That's goes, wraps all around the back of us.
Yeah.
And so they did some clearing and it seems to be drying up now, but it just was another lake forming like twenty feet behind the house, you know, it's on our property.
And we've had some very wet springs.
Yeah. So we're just concerned about things.
And the elevation of our property.
So the good thing is, um, we, like you've mentioned, we're gonna do the stormwater review with the peer review. So that means the town has an engineer on our behalf. The developer pays for it. And the peer review will go over and make sure that all of the drainage is done.
Yep.
According to, you know, what, what those guidelines are.
That's why we're here, the documentation, the concern of five years from now. Okay. Now we got a lake, you know, and we gotta build a bridge to our house now, you know?
Absolutely. Yes.
You know, it's a big pond now, you know, so.
All right. Anything else? Or is that your main? All right. Well, thank you.
Should do it, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Does anyone else have any questions at this point?
Oh, one, one last question. Um, I think I know what it is, but the vehicle storage area, I'm assuming that's just during construction. You had on your drawings as a vehicle storage.
That's exactly what that is.
Okay. It's one, I just, it's sorry. I thought it was only erosion control. Yeah.
Yeah, the erosion control plan.
Yeah.
You wanna show a spot where it's safe and you're not gonna have any problems if you've stored people.
So I thought, just wanted to ask.
Oh, before I forget, just, did you say that the road, you're gonna be conditioned where that road will not be extended? Is that the agreement?
That's, that's one of our.
It's been done in the past and we have no problem. We're doing it here.
And Kathy did confirm that it is one of our standard conditions that we still have.
Great. That's, that's good.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do, did you have any questions? No? Okay. All right. Um, so we'd be looking at peer review for the stormwater. And any?
You're gonna have to get another plan with utilities, right? You're gonna show the underground utilities?
We, uh, typically they, they don't get shown on a subdivision plan. We can, but they're kinda like a cartoon. Because the, the utility company dictates where they have to go. And just about every time I've ever put them on a plan, they go somewhere different.
No, maybe I'm, maybe I'm thinking about the last one. No, the last one, we had town water, where they had taunt and water. I'm thinking about the last one on the, on, on seventy-nine. So maybe that's the reason why. They had that cause it was, they had to show it was town, it was water. But yeah, again, the cable, cable and electricity is your.
Kinda they do it where they wanna do it, you know?
I'm fine with that.
I do remember that being said before that, yeah, they don't.
Yeah.
But I'm glad that they're taking away that waiver because that's usually not one we allow.
It's nice to, it's nice to not enforce.
All right. So we'll go for the peer review. Um, have you, you haven't pursued that yet though, have you? I'm not, no. Um, and looking at a date to continue to, um, assuming a couple of meetings would probably make sense at this point.
Yeah, the, more than likely the reviewer is not gonna get anything done in two weeks' time.
So May twenty-second, that'll be the second meeting from this evening?
Words for me.
Yeah. Okay. So would someone like to?
Make, make a motion to continue ninety-two Holland to May twenty-second, twenty-five.
Second.
Motion in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Should get home at time to see who the page is.
Yeah.
Michelle, when you say you're working on your revising your.
Rules and regulations.
Uh, when you were talking about, um, streetlights and, uh, you seen what Middleborough does? Middleborough requires driveway streetlights and they make him put a driveway streetlight covenant. I can send you a copy of one.
That'd be awesome.
That's a great.
Yeah. It works really well and, you know, it, it's very clear. Uh, it can't be with an on-off switch. It has to be operated by.
By a sensor.
The daylight. It has to. Um, and it's, uh, the building commissioner can't issue a occupancy permit unless there, there is one. It gets recorded as a covenant.
Hmm.
Um, they've, they've used it for years. They're very familiar with it because I drafted the first one.
No kidding? Yeah, that'd be excellent. If you could send it to me.
I will.
Or in Kathy, so we can record it to Serpents.
It works really well. And, you know, everybody puts it at the end of the, their driveways and you don't need streetlights.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, it lights up. That's, that is one of the ones we, we would like that, the end of the driveway versus putting the streetlights up just.
Yeah.
Just so it, it gives some life, at least with their turnaround. And you can see the, not that down here doesn't matter, cause it's two houses, one or the other.
Yeah. And, and it's set up that even though it's a covenant, it's set up that, cause when lawyers see covenants, they say, I need a release.
Yep.
But it's set up, so it's very clear. It says the issuance of an occupancy permit is considered to be a release of the covenant. I'll send you the copy. It works really well.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right. We'll see you soon.
All right. We have two sets of minutes. We have January thirtieth and February thirteenth meeting minutes. Has everyone had a chance to review these?
Yep.
They were both lengthy. I didn't have any edits. Did anyone else?
Nope.
Right.
No, it's good.
Thank you, Kathy. Tedious, working on.
Can I, uh, can I do them both at the same time?
Um, yeah. I think we can. Right. As long as everybody was here for all of them, nobody else.
Oh, uh, Jack, first one, yeah, everyone was there.
Yep.
Yeah. Second one, everyone was there, yeah. So I'll, um, make a motion to approve the, uh, January thirtieth and February thirteenth meeting minutes as drafted.
Second.
Motion in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Minutes are approved. All right. Agenda item number six. We have administrative update.
Thank you.
Actually, sorry, I was going off the wrong.
Yeah, it's alternate planning board member.
Not the right agenda. Okay. So agenda item number six, discuss alternate planning board member. So we do have in our packet, the language that was adopted via town meeting in twenty twenty-three, oh, uh, twenty twenty-two, added in November fourteenth, twenty twenty-two. And it states, planning board associate member. There should be one associate member recommended by the planning board and appointed annually by the select board for a one-year term. The chair may designate the associate member to sit on the board for purposes of acting on special permit applications in case of absence, inability to act, or conflict of interest on the, on the part of any member of the planning board or in the event of a vacancy on the board. So we did, we passed this, um, new bylaw at town meeting and we've never filled the role. Um, I thought that considering we have a special permit in front of us, it's a little late to have anyone.
Mm-hmm.
We can't, cause typically when they're appointed, they're appointed for a term that begins and ends in July. I think it's the, the same as the fiscal year. So, um, if we could maybe put it out there that we're looking for an associate member.
Mm-hmm.
Um, find somebody, recommend it to the select board, have the select board make the appointments. And so then it'll be in place for a year. And if that person wants to remain on, they can, you know, continue to apply. But at least we have somebody there in the event that we have a special permit. And say, somebody is conflicted, someone comes down with something, an illness, they miss a couple of meet, more than, you know, more than the allowed one meeting that you can,
Mm-hmm.
um, mullionize for. Um, and I know we've had a couple of people, a few people who have attended religiously. I don't know if any, if you're interested in, in submitting, you know, your interest, but I think, you know, it's, it would, it's not something that you'd have to sit up here and attend every meeting, but in the event where we have a special permit situation, where, uh, right now with the one sixty Bedford is looking for a special permit for a parking facility. So only on those special permit occasions, um, would that member become active if, a- and you would attend the meetings. And then if somebody was not able to attend, that way you would pick up right where that person left off and be able to vote because, um, for a special permit, I think it has to be a unanimous.
It's a super majority. You have to have four.
Thank you. Uh, so four, four out of five?
Four out of five.
Four out of five members, uh, in order to pass a special permit. So, um, my thought was we could draft something, let, uh, town administrator know.
Okay.
And, um, I know Tracy's the one who typically puts the bulletins up.
Yep.
And, um, just let everyone know that we're looking for an associate member, uh, probably attach this just like you have here, the language.
Mm-hmm.
So that it's clear what we're looking for. Um, and then if anyone's interested, you're attending anyways, you might as well. Uh, you know, um.
Where the hell did I put it?
So.
Hmm? It has some description. I saw it.
Do you, do you wanna do, send the memo? Do you feel comfortable with that? Do you want me to do? Yeah?
Draft the memo. It was drafted in the memo.
All right.
Okay.
So do we wanna take a vote to, um?
No. Send that to?
To, um.
Send it.
Well, well, I guess we wanna publicize that we are looking for an associate member to, for the purpose of special permits.
Right.
So, um, and then have Kathy send the memo to the town administrator and Tracy so, so that they can post it and publicize that we're looking for someone. And if we get any interest on a future meeting, we can review them and then send a recommendation to the select board.
Okay.
So.
Make a motion to, uh, what was it? Publicize the, uh, the, uh, our, uh, I guess our, our, yeah, look for an associate member of the planning board.
For special permits?
Special permit purposes, applications.
All right.
Second.
Motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. So Kathy will draft that. Thank you, Kathy. Um.
Yeah.
Discuss, uh, number seven, discuss planning board representatives on other boards committees. This was kind of a last, last minute. Kathy, uh, was making some revisions and I just said, oh, you know, another thing we have to look at is, um, so David sits on Serpents, I sit on CPC, Jack's been on master plan, uh, they're looking to form that economic development committee. Um, so, and that'll be another planning board seat. So that's, I guess, something we can consider, cause they're not appointing that yet. So when we get that, maybe we'll, we'll, we'll put this, sort of like a reorganization. If, if somebody wants to try something different or new, wants to sit on another, try out something new, something different.
Great.
What's that?
There's a finance committee position open.
Oh, no, but this, so this is more of acting as a planning board, uh.
I know. I'm saying if you wanna jump out of there, you can jump over there.
Uh-huh.
So, so just, you know, if, if anybody wants to switch it up a little, we can keep that in mind and, um, probably do it when we get. I'm assuming the select board will send something out when they form that economic development committee.
I hope so.
Right. So, so I don't really, I, I think they pushed it out to May. I'm not sure.
Did they?
I'm not, I'm not sure when though. So put that on a future agenda with economic development seat. Agenda item number eight, administrative update. Um, we have review forms. So this came about after our last meeting where we had quite a bit of, um, back and forth over site plan review. So this is our site plan review application. So my hope was to potentially, um, preemptively address those issues before they come to that again, uh, by adding to the application what we would be looking for. Um, I know one of the items in question was about the filing with the registry of deeds. And Kathy did reach out to town council. She got, um, the advice on that. Um, she said, hi Kathy, site plan decisions with a plan attached are often recorded. However, the zoning bylaw provides that only the construction may not begin unless the planning board decision has been filed with the town clerk. And the plans have been endorsed by the planning board. So they are often recorded, but it's, it, it doesn't specify in our bylaw that it has to be recorded. Kathy actually came up with a good solution. Kathy?
Um, I was thinking once the plan is endorsed by the board, the applicant can get a copy of that, just a regular eight by ten and attach it to the decision and record it altogether. We would still have, you know, that wouldn't be accurate. Um, but it would, we would have the endorsed plan. And, and the hard copy, which would be accurate.
So maybe adding something to that effect as a, as a condition, just, just stating that, um, you know, expectation for including a set of the final plans with the decision for filing.
Right. Yeah.
Um, that way we're not going back and forth again, trying to figure it out. And, and we'll stay consistent. And it's not in the bylaw that they have to do it. So I don't really wanna do something that
Yeah.
pushes against that, where, where someone can say, well, your bylaws don't say it. So I think this covers us for the purpose of including that plan. Um, and then the other one, um.
It's number eighteen, you're saying?
So I was thinking of just adding it as its own.
Right. But on, on number eighteen on the form says, oh, plan shall be legible, drawn in accordance with the rules and regulations of the registry of deeds, chapter thirty-six. All printed, plan size, material, lettering and related items. Not that, that was one of the concerns with the last one was that.
Yeah, right.
Oh, my lettering is not right. I'd have to redo the whole drawing.
Mm-hmm.
So again, if, if this is that, like again, is that in our, is that in our bylaws? I know that chapter thirty-six, section thirteen A, is that?
I think she copied all of these into it.
So that particular one isn't in the bylaw.
It's not.
Right. But you're saying that's the registry of deeds. They're, they're referencing the registry of deeds requirements, right?
Right.
Okay.
Hmm. Well, that's a good point.
I'm just saying if we're telling, but they, even though they're not registering them, like they're not, they're not, I guess they're not registering with their, you know, they're not, um, what's the, can't think of the word, but I mean, filing them with the registry of deeds, like they still should be in the, and we should just, we can still make it that they have to be with those guidelines. Again, what happened last, last, last meeting where they were like, oh, I didn't have, like, it's, I can't do it because I'd have to redo it. I'd have to redo my whole drawings, cause they're not done that way. Like, that, that's one of our requirements that it has to be. So that should still be in there. So we just gotta.
So, and I think that came in prior.
Comes in, right, right.
Prior to this new form. So hopefully that'll.
Yeah.
Address it in the beginning.
But is it in our bylaws? Do they have to follow that anywhere? I don't, I mean, it's not anywhere else. I just didn't know where she got that from, or is that just something that she's done elsewhere?
Possibly, yes.
Okay. I just wanna make sure it's not something that, yeah, was required. We just never picked up on it. Okay.
Um, the other item I was thinking is the expectations for the peer review, those milestones. Remember when they were saying they just wanted to review the asphalt and peer review gave, gave us some feedback. Um, do we wanna just add something that includes, um?
Inspections?
And, and I don't know if it really works here because this is more a checkoff, but is there like something we could add that says, you know, the expectations are, would be something along the line? something along the lines of, um... Like a pre-construction review as well as, um... Reviewing the asphalt, because what peer review said is, it's actually, it's not, it didn't seem like it's actually more affordable for them to review the asphalt. It seems like depending on how many times they go out, yes, it could get more expensive, but if they just go out briefly a couple times, it's going to be the same as just going out that one time for the
Yeah.
asphalt. So I definitely want to see an added item, just a checkoff for, you know, the expectation, filing, however you think you want to word it, Kathy. That says that, you know, plan attached to the conditions for filing.
Okay. Yeah, that's easy.
And then, I don't know, what do you, what do you think about adding something for the peer review milestones? I don't know. Is this the place to do it or is it not?
I...
So I, oh, I'm sorry.
I would think that, that somewhere in here you, you say that, you know, the applicant should expect that, you know, peer review would be, will be conducted
As part of the process.
You know, X, Y, and Z process.
Yep.
Just kind of warn them or warm them up to the, that's going to happen.
Right.
So it says on the first page, "Any technical services required to assist the planning board in preparing its written response shall be included as part of the escrow account fee 53G."
Can we put something there, like comment, "Including of all required inspections"? I don't know. Kathy, what were you going to say, I guess?
Um, there is something there for number 11, which you could expand. But you might want to decide, like, what are going to be those milestone inspections before you do that, so you could list them.
Okay, so do we want to put that on a future agenda again then? And you can print out all those things that we have from Apex?
Apex and Beals.
And Beals, yeah. And we'll...
Yeah, see if we add it there or like at the beginning, kind of, because we already kind of tell them they have, they shall do some stuff beforehand. But yeah, I think it should be...
And we used to call it bulletin suspenders when we made sure that it was all... So I mean, I don't see anything wrong with maybe stating something additional in that second paragraph and then also elaborating on 11
Yeah.
and giving, like Kathy said, maybe a list.
Yeah, including, including but not limited to the following milestones, inspections.
Right. Okay, so let's put this on the next...
The next one?
How are we looking for May so far, Kathy? Do we just have, we just have 19?
Yeah, so far.
That's just the 22nd, right? Those are no May 8th, right? 19 was May 8th.
May 8th, yep.
That's right.
So... May 8th for the forms, but we'll, we'll do its own agenda item and make, make it a big, like, we'll go through those items for peer review and possible vote, so that we can update the, um... Form and those will be the two things that we'll just make sure, like, maybe, do you want to come with like a rough draft of that added line? And then we can approve it all? Have it all ready?
I'll tie it out.
Okay.
I mean, it's not going to hurt to add to this by any stretch of the means. I think it's just a very minor thing to add in, but it also protects us in the fact that, you know, as this comes up and projects are more complicated and so forth.
That was way too long for one, one set of conditions.
Oh, they, they beat us down.
That was awful.
Yeah.
They did.
No, they worked us down, yeah.
They did. But, but this is, this is, this is, we're going in the right direction. That came in before this new implementation of the forms. We've seen two A and Rs come in now with the new form.
Yep.
It seems to make it a breeze, so I'm hoping site plan review with this new form, with the checklist, it's going to be easier and more straightforward right after, after that, so thank you, Nancy Durfey.
Thank you, Nancy.
And, and we should probably, you know, every so often, and by every so often, I mean, maybe once a year, take a look and see and just get an update. Well, yeah, add it or find out from Kathy to see, hey, you know, do we need this? Can we remove it?
All you, like, we asked today is maybe, maybe reach out to some of the applicants and, not reach out, I'm saying like we could
I don't feel like we'll hear it. I do feel like we'll hear it.
Make them more things to see if, like, if they had any comments, yeah.
I think if there's a complaint, we'll hear it.
Yeah, right.
More so than the pause live.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, so the next item is signs and residential zones update. Do we have any?
Nope. I have no update.
Okay.
Some of them still up. I've seen a couple of them still up.
Uh, planning consultant update. So I did have a meeting this past Wednesday with, um, the HR director and town administrator. The planning position is still open. They were going to try to pursue something that would work, maybe the consultant. It's still kind of up in the air, but they are willing to kind of pursue and see what, um, what options are doable. So I'll just kind of keep on that item and, and see where it goes. And when I have a definitive update, I will...
So they didn't provide a timeline or...
Well, so the problem is that...
Because of budget too, right?
So, so the, the budget isn't the issue for right now, like the interim, because we're currently still in fiscal 25, 26th isn't signed until July.
Yeah.
But the problem is, um, the consultant would have to have their own insurance, they'd have to have workers comp in order to work, you know, in the town offices, have their own liability, insurance. So I think that probably would put Nancy out of the question unless she's able to get that. I, I still want to reach out to her and just talk to her and see, you know, how she's feeling over there and... And we sort of put, you know, like, we're going to try this and if not, we'll, we'll revisit, maybe just looking into a consultant firm to...
Okay.
And, and who knows, the budget might change and maybe we'll be limited to a consultant. I don't know. We'll see. But as far as I know right now, it sounds like they do want somebody in-house.
Yep.
In, in that seat, so that's good, because we know that...
Which makes sense. I mean, you know, it is...
We've seen...
The volume of work isn't going away, so...
We've seen what, yeah, what's been going on.
Yep.
All right, so, uh, 13 Main Street update, Kathy, want to take that one?
Uh, just, I included the pitches that Bo had submitted and just waiting for Liz to get back to us to okay that and then the performance guarantee can be released.
Okay. So you're still waiting for her to review those?
Yeah, I, yeah, I will check back in with her either tomorrow or early next week.
So it'll probably be on our next meeting agenda?
Um, no, because you voted to...
So as soon as she does it, then it's all set. That's right, okay. Thank you, Africa.
Cross 13 Main Street off.
Okay, that'll be good. Um, and then 10 Harding Street update. Kathy, you included the conditions and showed all the changes.
Yes, just so you guys could take a look at it, make sure everything was captured. I did add a statement in, number three. Because you were just going with the final asphalt plan and just because there had been a problem with 13 Main Street and it came down to like a matter of there was only X amount of money in there and so it kind of, it's kind of like the economy.
Oh, right.
So, you know, if they are, problems are found, then they're going to have to, you know, um, replenish that account.
That makes sense. I even read that. I was like, oh, yeah, that's, that's great. But that was similar to what we did with 13 Main. I mean, 43 Main.
Yes.
Yeah.
So for item number 20, I meant to mention this too. Landscaping shall be completed within six months of occupancy. Has that, is that line deleted or added?
Added.
Added, okay.
Yeah, I think the deleted is for the number she changed with the number.
Deleted number, we have one.
Yeah, because I'm... All right. And then 25 was deleted. Yeah, 27. And you're basically...
Okay, I mean, it looks good to me.
Yeah, I...
I'm not, I don't have my list in front of me.
Yeah. I'm not seeing anything outstanding right now, but it's...
All right, so did you send this to them yet or no?
I didn't.
Okay.
Because you had already voted on it, so...
So just, that's the last thing to do, right? Because town council's already...
Yeah, I mean, once it's submitted, I'll scan it and send it to them.
This, I mean, this looks good. Just send them the final and then we should be all set.
Yeah.
All right, good. It'll be interesting to see what they put in over there. I'm actually looking forward to it. Next item is the interdepartmental quarterly meetings update. Um, I know Kathy did reach out a couple times asking for, um, anyone's interest. So we did, we got a memo back from conservation.
So the departments that were involved in this communication was what? It was conservation?
Open space?
Open space, border health. Am I missing anybody? GBA?
And open space, too, right?
I don't know. No, ZBA wouldn't.
I think we opened it up.
Did we? Okay.
So conservation has concerns about the meeting. Well, so Kathy did include their memo. Do you want me to read it? Um, it's from Nancy Yates, Conservation Commission Chair. "I'm writing to express concern regarding the new schedule for quarterly interdepartmental meetings, which the planning board independently voted to adopt. While we appreciate the initiative to improve communication and coordination among town boards and committees, there are some concerns. The members of our board and committee, our volunteers who generously donate their time, the addition of quarterly meetings without prior consultation with these boards and committees seems premature. We would request that any further discussions regarding town-wide board and committee scheduling be tabled while individual board and committee members are given the opportunity to discuss at a public meeting. These requested additional meetings." So, I mean, that's fine. We've, we've opened up, you know, the option if people wanted to, you know, to, to attend, if they were interested, that's fine. If not, that's fine too. At least we tried.
I don't feel like it was an obligation. We weren't like, we were just asking.
Yep.
Yeah.
"Hi Kathy, this is from the town administrator. I think we can get something worked out. After town meeting in June, the select board hasn't discussed this yet, but I imagine they're in the same camp as the other boards and committees." And so... That's, that's it, so no extra communication.
Well, I mean, you know, if anything comes up that is like what we had with, um...
Well, I think the hope was to, rather than be reactive, be proactive. Because by the time things come along, a lot of times it's too late. Because when we get site plan review and we send it out, the select board, the prior chair, you know, a couple years ago, he was complaining all the time. We don't, we get these plans, we have no time to review them. And then our meeting would be, you know, 40s later, they didn't have time to review or respond. So a lot of times waiting to say, the emails go out, it doesn't give enough time. And I thought, you know, the quarterly meetings should have given a preemptive, more collaborative, um, opportunity. But it is what it is. We are all just volunteers. If other people don't want to do that, then we tried.
Yeah, that's all you can do.
All we can do. Okay. Our next meeting is May 8th here at the police station. Any other business? No. Okay. Would someone like to make a...
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Meeting is adjourned.